Do I throw people who propose their status on that? Oh, okay.
Yeah. So, to the law.
And I'm ready.
We were excited too.
Yeah. Three of us also does not mean anything. So we'll.
Actually, be her and Ernestina, or Tina. She was my Tina. Tina said she's gonna be here. She's hoping she's gonna be on time. Just that she, I emailed, but she got the.
Before we go on air.
Yeah.
Hi, can you hear us? You can? Great. I don't know if you.
Yes.
Thanks, Ernestina. I don't know if you saw in your email, late breaking news. Great. So the historic resources is not gonna be on the agenda. This slight change is messing with Lisa's evening child plans to a small extent. But, you know, let's see if we can get through this quickly is what I'm gonna put out there. So, yeah. All right, well, we can, yeah. Great.
Is Lisa there?
She is.
Hello.
We can't see you. We just have the camera. You don't have you guys?
I think he's setting it up.
Yeah, and I'm live. I'm in person since I thought there was going to be the additional review.
There we go. Well, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting in order and welcome you to the regular meeting of the Milwaukee Planning Commission. Agendas and additional copies of staff reports are available on the city website, www.milwaukeeoregon.gov. You can locate them by going to the community calendar where tonight's meeting page is posted. If you have reviewed the agenda, please do so. It contains important information about the process. Our first order of business is our Native Lands acknowledgment. The City of Milwaukee respectfully acknowledges that our community is located on the ancestral homelands of the Clackamas people. In 1855, the surviving members of the Clackamas signed the Willamette Valley Treaty, also known as the Kalapuya Treaty. With the federal government in good faith, we offer our respect as well as our gratitude for the Indigenous people of this land. Our next order of business is our meeting minutes. Can I get approval of the January 14, 2025, meeting minutes? Or does anyone have any corrections they'd like to make? Hearing none. Could I get a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes?
It's been moved. It's been seconded. All those in favor? Aye? Aye?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Any informational items from staff?
I don't have any informational items at this time.
All right. Record pace. Audience participation. This is an opportunity to comment on items not on tonight's agenda. Do we have anyone? We don't have anyone in the room or online. If anyone does show up, they can raise their hand on Zoom or dial star nine. Our first hearing item tonight is Historic Resource Review, which is a continuation of the Type III application for the Historic Resource Review, file number HR-2024-002. The Type III application for this Historic Resource Review for 1620 Southeast Waverly Drive is called to order. From a process perspective, I wanted to share that we've had a request from Troy Fowler, the applicant's representative, asking us to reopen the record so that we could receive additional testimony, including revised plan sets. So I'd like to see if we can all agree to open the record, leave the record open, and then continue the hearing until February 11th, as our time's certain. How do my fellow planning commissioners feel about that?
I have no objection to that.
No objections.
All right. Great. Hearing, no objections to that. Could I get a motion to reopen the record and then continue the hearing until February 11th, time certain?
I motion to reopen the hearing and continue it at February 11th.
Great. It's been moved to reopen public testimony and continue to February 11th. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Great. Any abstentions? Any opposition? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much. Really appreciate that. I don't think I need to gavel on anything. That feels a little over the top. Well, let's do it then. We'll gavel it. It's been continued. Great. So we'll move on to our next order of business. Which is.
98.
Yes. Yeah, thanks. I'm a little lost there, which is the presentation and hearing for item ZA-2024-002. This is the hearing on Oregon Senate Bill 1537. This is a Type V application. Like to ask staff to cite zoning code places where things apply.
Thank you, Chair. Milwaukee Municipal Code Section 19.902, Amendments to Maps and Ordinances, and Milwaukee Municipal Code Section 19.1008, Type V Review.
Great. I think I said Type IV. This is a Type V. So the public hearing on this Type V application for municipal code amendments is called the Order. The purpose of the hearing is for the commission's consideration of application number ZA-2024-002. If you're here to testify, please remember to confine your remarks to the application of the relevant criteria and avoid repetition and any information that is not relevant. We'll be making a recommendation to Milwaukee City Council about whether the proposal conforms with all the city's applicable criteria. Does any member of Planning Commission wish to abstain from the hearing? No? None? Anyone wish to declare an actual or potential conflict of interest? No? Then let's proceed to the staff report.
All right. I'm going to share my screen. Okay. Evening Commissioners. Vera Colley, Senior Planner, to present the code amendment package related to Senate Bill 1537. Senate Bill 1537 was signed into law back in March of 2024, and the purpose of it is to address Oregon's housing supply and affordability crisis. The law became effective on January 1st of this year, and it sunsets on January 2nd, 2032. So it has a timeframe, a very limited timeframe in which it is effective. There are several key provisions that are part of 1537, and I know that I included the entire Senate bill in your pack. I'm sure you all read it, so I will be very brief in my description of it. But there are several key provisions that were summarized in the staff report. It established a new Housing and Accountability Production Office. It funds new infrastructure programs and other land readiness to support housing development. It establishes a new state revolving loan fund, and it provides one-time growth, urban growth boundary expansion tool. And it requires cities to grant administrative adjustments or variances to local development and design standards for housing development. And that's the key piece of the Senate bill that we're gonna talk about this evening. So again, we're requiring, it requires cities to grant variances. So the variances that are submitted as part of the Senate Bill 1537 application, the city is required to approve those variances if they meet certain requirements. They can be packaged up as 10 distinct variances. So it's a large package of variances that can be submitted. There are very specific conditions and timelines that go with these variance applications. And only the applicant can appeal the approval of a, of one of these variance application packages. So it's a little bit different than our own variance process here that we have within our existing code. There is a potential exemption to being required to approve any of these variances or to be able, or to need to accept one of these application packages. And that's part of the reason why we're here with this code amendment package. It's not the only reason, but it's part of that reason. Okay. So there are some pretty specific, sort of pretty specific qualifications for when you can submit one of these variance applications for the development itself. Is it located in a residential or a mixed-use zone? Does the development that's being proposed meet a minimum density of 17 units an acre? And it needs to include a net increase in new housing units for either single detached, mixed-use developments, manufactured dwelling parks, ADUs, and middle housing. And at least one of these, so this is sort of the applicability criteria or kind of like the approval criteria for the variance. So the applicant needs to show that the variances that are being requested will do at least one of the following things for the developer. And this is taken right from the bill. Of course, you already read it, so you know that. But it's this kind of language that it will enable the development that was otherwise not feasible. That's the criterion. So there it's, the languages would be, I think, fairly complicated to kind of administer because there isn't a lot of, there aren't a lot of specifics within the Senate bill as to what the applicant would need to submit. But they need to show some information about that the variance would allow for the developer to reduce the sale or rental price. It would increase the number of units that would normally be able to be built. They also could be affordable to moderate income households or to low-income households or different thresholds for how long they would need to be, that they would need to be affordable. And enable the provision of accessibility or visitability is what they call when things are accessible, an accessible design. So at least one of these criterion need to be part of the application for the variance package itself. So the next couple of slides talk about the development standards. And so the bill has very specific development and design standards that an applicant can request variances from and a various specific amounts. So a development could ask for up to 20, up to a 25% reduction in the minimum required landscaping or common area that our code requires and so on. So parking minimums, lot size decreases, lot coverage increases, setback decreases, et cetera. So this table sort of summarizes all of those development standards that can be packaged up as part of one of these variance applications. Again, with the idea being that development and design standards can hinder residential development. And so the goal of this, of the Senate bill is to provide relief from these kinds of standards in the hopes that this would enable more development to be able to, more residential development to happen. Similarly, there are very specific design standards that are outlined in the Senate bill. Things like facade materials, if your code has design standards around facade materials or articulation standards, roof forms, garage door orientation, window materials, and total window area. Not all of these design and development standards are found in our code, but if they were found in our code, these, you're allowed to, or this is part of the variance package that you could submit for the development. The review process that's outlined in the Senate bill is that it's a Type II review process. So it's, it is an administrative review where the planning manager is the decision maker, and it does include public notice. However, only the applicant could appeal any decision from the application. So our normal process is if you can show that you are aggrieved by a decision as someone who received notice, you are able to appeal a Type II review to the Planning Commission. But in this particular case, the way the Senate bill is written, that would not happen or would not be permitted.
So the applicant would, the applicant would appeal to Planning Commission?
Correct. But no one else, no one else would have standing to appeal. Just the applicant. Exactly. Yep. And the measure, as I said earlier, the measure sunsets on January 2nd. So the, what we have, what we have found is that most communities are not incorporating any of the Senate bill into their own codes. They would just, they would apply it as needed. If someone came in with a Senate Bill 1537 application, it would just be applied as it's laid out in the Senate bill, given the fact that it sunsets in a few years. Okay. Again, there is an exemption process to the provisions of Senate Bill 1537. It's administered through the Department of Land and Conservation Development. If the city can show that any of the listed variances within the Senate bill are, that you can get a variance, you know, to those standards, and that within the last five years, the city has approved at least 90% of the variances that have been requested of the city. So they, and they created a huge spreadsheet, you know, to fill out for the exemptions, to kind of lay out your last five years of variances. The city has, in fact, approved more than 90%, actually, it's nearly 100% of the requested variances that we've, that we've done. And so the city can request an exemption from applying the statute to those standards that meet, that meet these requirements. However, I think I have this on. Yeah. So Milwaukee can provide evidence of both, of both of those requirements for the exemption, except that our current code prohibits variances that would result in, in a development that exceeds the maximum density for that development. And maximum density applies to multi-unit residential developments and single unit or single detached dwelling developments, basically the lots, the number of lots themselves. Middle housing is exempt from maximum density limits, except for townhouses. Planned developments that are later, the hillside development was actually approved as a planned development. They exceed density. Within that code section, it talks about being able to exceed density by 20%. So we do have a, there is a way, but you have to go through the planned development process, which is a Type IV review process. So a couple of slides just on maximum density, because right now, we could not request an exemption from the maximum density provision of Senate Bill 1537 because we don't allow variances to that standard itself. Maximum density limits the number of units, not the size of the structure. So it doesn't have anything to do with the box. It has to do with how many units are inside the box. Code, our code relies primarily on development standards to regulate site development, things like landscaping, lot coverage, setbacks, the tree code, et cetera, are sort of, are what governs what the size of the box or the Jell-O mold that we've, that we've called this since House Bill, since all of our middle housing code. But sort of this idea of you've got lot coverage or setbacks in this example, and then you have your Jell-O mold, that's the box. But density just talks about how many units can be inside that box. So again, single detached dwellings, maximum density applies during land division only. So that's the only time that we think about density because it has to do with the number of lots, because it's one unit on one lot. So density standards are tagged to the lot size. Right now, our minimum lot size for a single detached dwelling is 5,000 square feet. And we would require, you would be required to submit for a variance to that minimum lot size in a subdivision to be able to get more of those. So in order to qualify for the exemption from the Senate Bill 1537, we would need to allow variances to maximum density. So basically removing that prohibition on variances. So the proposed amendments that are before you do two things. One, we are proposing that we would amend the code to allow variances to maximum density. And we have also proposed that we would allow a Type II variance to increase maximum density by up to 25% so that you could, in fact, request a variance for that density bump. We think that that's important to allow for more development of much-needed housing here in the city. So we think that that's an important step. We know that there, there are going to be efforts within the planning department to take a look at all of our density, you know, densities across the city in our, both our high-density and our moderate-density zones. But in the meantime, we think it's important to provide an avenue for additional development opportunities in our residential areas. It also will allow for the, to request the exemption from the provisions of Senate Bill 1537 and to do that. We did have a work session with the city council and went through kind of all of this. And the direction that was given by council was to submit for the, for the code amendments that you see before you and to seek that exemption from application of Senate Bill 1537 and allow our code to kind of govern what we're doing when it comes to allowing for variances for various development and design standards. We would also note that staff is working on a code amendment package that we will, that we will be before you at some point in the next few months, talking about Affordable Housing Code, Affordable Housing Incentives within our code, where we are, so we're not sort of abandoning this idea of packages of variances or being able to kind of incentivize affordable housing through our development standards. And we are borrowing quite a bit of what Senate Bill 1537 has, but we're repackaging it in a way that makes more sense for our code. We would also note that some of the variances that are noted in Senate Bill 1537, for example, 10% of a side yard setback, our code actually is 25%. So quite a few of our variances that we already have in our Type II code are more than what Senate Bill 1537 has. To be fair, some of our variances would be Type III variances, depending on what they ask for. But many of them in our Type II code for our very specific development standards are already greater than what the Senate bill has in mind. For a Type V public hearing, we are required to post notice for 30 and 35 days. And so all of that was done before the holidays, as required. We didn't receive any comments until today, but I did forward that to all of you from the Housing Land Advocates and for Housing Council of Oregon. They always review any code amendments that have to do with housing to make sure that our findings are clear on how it meets, that we have findings that talk about Goal 10, the Housing statewide, statewide goal. And they did find that our findings did meet the Goal 10 requirements for that. So you have a few decisions or a few options for your decisions this evening. Again, this is a recommendation to City Council. We have a tentative hearing date with the City Council on February 18th. But our recommendation is that you recommend that council approve the proposed amendments per our recommended findings and support. You could also recommend that council approve the proposed amendments with revisions and include any, we would just need to read any of those modifications into the record. You could recommend that council deny the proposed amendments, or we could continue the hearing. As a Type V, there is no 120-day clock, so we could continue the discussion as needed.
Great, thanks.
Presentation.
Yeah, thanks so much, Vera. Does anyone have any clarifying questions for staff?
No, I do not.
Great. I think I had just a minor clarifying question. So if we kind of didn't go the route of these kind of proposed modifications, like is the other path to like literally create your Senate Bill 1537, like application pathway that applicants would kind of go down if they wanted to do that?
So I think if we, so if we do, if we don't make the code amendments to maximum density, but still went down the path of asking for the exemption for all the other things, then someone would still be able to submit for, submit a 1537 variance application specific to, specifically targeted towards maximum density. And so they could still submit a Type II adjustment or variance application related to density. So, yeah.
Okay. Great. Yeah, that's helpful. Yeah, just interesting to kind of think about how, some of the packaging for efficiencies. Yeah. Great. We did receive some correspondence on the matter, which you kind of included in the presentation. Was there anything else? Or do we have anyone who wishes to testify on the application? Do we have anyone online?
There is not anyone.
There's no one online and no one in the room? Well, if there's no public testimony, we'll close the public testimony portion of the hearing on the Type V application for code amendments. This is file ZA-2024-002 is now closed. Is the planning commission ready for discussion? Vice Chair Edge, you leapt off the screen there.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, this is, this is such a simple change, you know, that we're making to the code, but you know, it's, you know, we're able to show that we, you know, that we do comply, you know, with the requirements for an exemption here or, you know, for total exemption, you know, it looks like. So that's, you know, this is a really simple thing to do. It's appropriate, I think. Do away with this provision, you know, it doesn't seem to, you know, it really does seem to conflict, I guess I should say, with our comprehensive plan, you know, housing policies. So doing away with this particular provision, I think, is ultimately good. It's, you know, does a better job of implementing our policies that we adopted now five, five years ago, approaching five years ago. And I also, you know, wanted to really echo what was expressed in the letter from the Fair Housing Council that staff did an awesome job with the findings and, you know, and linking the findings to, you know, for Goal 10 to, you know, our comprehensive plan policies and all the work that we've been doing, you know, since then. Really a great job. It's very clear, you know, and it really does an excellent job of expressing, you know, our, the sentiment for us as a city and, you know, how, you know, we want to really be supportive of, you know, housing production. So thank you for that. Just an awesome job, awesome job with that. So anyway, I won't keep going on. The findings, you know, reflects, you know, the facts in the record and propose to recommend approval to City Council of this application tonight.
Great, thanks so much, Vice Chair Edge. Anyone else care to get in on discussion?
I'll just mention that I agree with Vice Chair Edge's opinion of the thoroughness of the presentation and how helpful it was for understanding the situation. of the presentation and how helpful it was for understanding the situation. I think helping to promote housing goals is absolutely on top of mind for most people across the city. And so seeing any movement towards that is good. However, I really like the idea of us having control over it more at a local level. And it sounds like we have some really good plans to move that forward in a way that really works for us. So this helps set us on that path, and so I also have no objections.
Thanks much.
Yeah, I would say my my only concern going into this was trying to understand what our rate of acceptance would be for those variants, but it sounds like we're already nearing that 100% rates, that 90% goal. So I don't see any issues with it as presented. And I just want to point out, like we we kind of mentioned with our hearing regarding the floodplain code amendments, how little we had to change to reach this point. I think it just goes to show how on top of things we already are. We're really ahead of the game with a lot of this. So I just want to thank staff.
Thanks, Commissioner Pennick. I think I would just, oh, yep, Commissioner Fuenmaor.
I was just gonna say, I was gonna echo everybody and say thank you to the staff for building the report and doing the thorough analysis, especially at this moment, we really need encouragement.
Yeah, I agree with a lot of that in terms of, you know, housing affordability is a major topic. I think there's a lot of, a lot in the news you see on a regular basis about how underbuilt we are. And I was just looking and I can kind of, I can follow up the email and share it out. But Oregon Housing and Community Services just recently published a dashboard about housing production across the entire state by community. And I think to Commissioner Pennick's point of we're doing a pretty good job when you actually get in there and you can look at the numbers. And I think it's because, you know, we've created a, we're, we're, we're clear in understanding what our goals are and then have aligned code and policy in order to kind of help implement that. So happy to move forward with this and continue to make progress there and be a little bit of a beacon in Clackamas County for what cities can do and how we can do it in a controlled manner at the exact same time. So if there's no further discussion, could I get a motion?
I move that we recommend approval of ZA dash, where'd it go? I lost it. ZA dash 2024 dash 002 with the findings distributed by staff.
Second. Been moved and seconded to recommend this on to city council. All those or any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. This decision is a recommendation to Milwaukee City Council, which will make the final decision after a public hearing. Please see planning staff for details concerning the city council hearing date and process. We'll gavel again just because it's fun. At this point in the agenda, Planning Commission will act as the community involvement advisory committee. Does staff have any updates to provide? Do CIAC members have any items to report on?
I do not.
Hearing none from staff. Anything from planning commissioners? No. You know, I think we are maybe somewhat related in the community involvement space. You know, we are kind of going through the process now of recruiting planning commissioners. Once we get that recruitment complete and planning commissioners seated, in terms of community involvement, we are planning on having our our NDA planning commissioner meeting. We've kind of delayed that a little bit, just as we're wanting to make sure we have kind of a fully seated body and not have a meeting and then bring on a few new people. So we can just kind of order of operations, I guess, a little bit. And maybe that all segue there to Planning Department or Planning Commission, other business updates. And I'd say the only other kind of Planning Commission update that I have is we are slated by our bylaws to have officer elections. I think, given the fact that we're on getting ready to onboard new people, we're going to just push that back a little bit. But we haven't lost track of that, and we'll get to that very quickly. But I want to make sure we can just move a few things along first. So Laura, I don't know if you had anything else.
I was just gonna say, adding on to what you were saying about the Planning Commission recruitment process, we hopefully we will have the new planning commissioners appointed by city council and on the dais by March. I don't know if it'll be the first meeting, the second meeting in March. That's the goal. So hopefully that will be happening.
Great. I think you said we had, you said kind of earlier when we chatted, I think we have 11 applicants.
We have 11 applicants, and it's going to be myself and Chair Sherman and Mayor Beatty and City Councilor Massey to sit down and go through the applications and then figure out who's going to get interviewed and do that all as a group and then hopefully have appointments sometime in the next month or two, just depending on when we can get it through city council.
Anything else?
I wanted to give the update that I was gonna stopping in the planning commission, but I will continue until there is a new person that can take the position I am, just because I don't have the bandwidth to put the commission at this moment.
Yeah. Well, thanks for letting us know and really appreciate your willingness to kind of stick with us for a little bit, just to help make sure we have quorum and all of that. And I really valued your kind of perspective and thoughts on the planning commission, Ernestina. So I know that it's hard to balance all sorts of things in life, and especially as you've shared, you know, as a, as a single mother. We're gonna, we're gonna miss you and look forward to maybe seeing you on a soccer field sometime soon.
You'll be seeing me, yeah. There I will be, or many other events. I volunteer always in everything around the city if I can, but yes, I appreciate everybody in the commission. I'm not, this is not my last one. I will be sitting here for many more. You said March, I don't know when that will be, but we'll figure it out, something probably in person. Maybe we can get me in person.
Yeah, that sounds great. And I think we'll certainly be sharing with planning commissioners as we're kind of going through the recruitment process. But Laura and I did a little bit of homework, just in terms of meeting lengths and durations. I looked at three years' worth of meetings to see how long meetings went. I'm happy, or maybe not happy, I'm happy to report our average meeting length is two hours and 20 minutes. Last year, 2024, I think we were right on target with 2:21. And, you know, we've also had, just in terms of the world of fun facts, our shortest meeting, which we've now exceeded, was 34 minutes in those three years. And our longest meeting was just over five hours, which was a grueling, I remember it, comprehensive plan. We had to like adopt stuff. It was going to city council and we, there was votes to be counted and whipping votes and all of that. But fortunately, that one was definitely an outlier. So anyways, I think we'll be sharing some of that information. And Laura actually spent a lot of time looking at that information more closely and just recognizing that on nights where we have, you know, multiple land use hearings, those are the ones that like can push us into the three hour range or the three and a half hour range. So one thing that Laura and I were talking about, as well as with Vice Chair Edge, of just us as a commission, as we've got an agenda, just trying to kind of level set of like, it'll be a short meeting, or it'll be a long, or we think it might be a medium, just so that we can all kind of better plan our lives. Appreciate the conversations we've been having on this topic for the last little bit. And I think this is an improvement that'll just help everyone, so.
Yeah, and I think to that point, I sent out an email ahead of this meeting and kind of said, here's where I think we're going to land. And then, of course, it changed, but hey, listen, it changed on the shorter side. So I will continue to do that before every meeting to just kind of give you all a heads up of where I think it's going to go, just if that, so that can be helpful.
I think that's unfortunately one of the challenging things about planning commission, like city council, like you have work to be done and you're there to do it until it's done, which, yeah. So any other, anything else? All right. Well, if there's nothing else, future forecasts?
Yeah. Okay, so we weren't going to have a meeting on February 11th, but we are now because we have this continuing public hearing, but that will be the only item on the agenda that night. And then we are meeting on February 25th to have an update about the transportation system plan work that we've been doing. We've checked in with the planning commission several times since we started that work, so it's time for an update. And then the only other thing that I wanted to bring up is that spring break, quite frequently, we don't have enough people here for quorum, or we don't want to talk about any meaty subjects or some, a lot of times we don't meet during spring break. So if there are folks that cannot be here during spring break, will you please let me know just in the next couple of weeks, just so that we can plan accordingly? Because we do have some applications coming in, so we need to set dates for that, so we can just figure that out. And then spring break, if you don't all know, is the week of March 24th.
I won't be here.
Okay, got it. So we know one person.
I'm in the air.
You're in the air.
But I'll, I'll let you know as soon.
As soon as you know. Yeah.
I need to check the daycare schedule. I'll see you.
Okay, great.
Don't know yet, but I live fast and loose, so.
It's hard to say, day to day.
That's great. I guess just kind of wondering with TSP update on the 20, is that a work session?
Yeah, it's just a work session.
It's a work session. Is there, would it be possible to collapse that, bring that forward on to the 11th?
No.
No? Okay.
No, sorry.
Yeah, just in terms of like technical work products and things like that.
Yeah, basically, we've got it on a schedule because we're meeting with the five three committees.
Yeah, no, I was just kind of, I was seeing two one, two one item agendas and was wondering. Okay, great. Well, that's, that's certainly helpful. And yeah, if anyone has updates on their vacation schedules, to get those to Laura. I would also encourage anyone who's going to be on planning commission over the summer as you book things to also just share that information because, yeah, things can get challenging during the summer.
Sure.
So, well, great. If there's nothing else, this is probably our second shortest meeting in the last three years. So I would love to entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
All those, and do we want to discuss this anymore? No? All those in favor? Aye.
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 Have a great night, everyone. Thanks so much.
Bye, thanks.
Thank you. Bye.